Welcome. As interim superintendent and acting chair of the Southampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Southampton Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 928-8437-5317 or by clicking on the website listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.seu21.org. We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 114, or email at dtuite@saun21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. We will now take roll call.
Jim Kime?
President and alone.
Rebecca Burdick?
Present, kids in and out.
Sharon Gordon?
Present and alone.
Roll call taken.
Okay, um, first on the agenda is reorganization and appointment of the board chair. Are there any motions to nominate a board chair?
I make the motion to nominate Jim as the board chair.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
You okay with that, Jim?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
You're doing such a good job.
I don't think we're gonna see many changes from when we go down this list, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we can have a vote.
Right, Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Okay, hand it over to you, Mr. Trump.
Okay, great. Um, I should know this. So the next on the agenda is the appointment of the vice chair. Who was that last year?
I think it was Sharon.
I think it was me, yeah.
You okay being the vice chair again?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna get a motion. Awesome, go for it, Becky.
I nominate Sharon as vice president.
I'll, I'll second that.
Give me just one second. Okay. But are you guys who have a discussion or you're all set?
We're good.
Okay, so Jim Kime?
Yes.
And Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great. Next is the school board committee appointments. So just one, I just want to verify the appointments this year from a need perspective are going to be the same as last year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. So I would think it would make the most sense just to continue it as we had it last year. Does anybody have a different opinion?
No, that's great.
Becky, you okay with that?
Oh yeah, sorry. I said I was okay with it.
I didn't catch it. Okay, great. So we can do it as one overall motion, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve the committee appointments? I'll just say because they were, you know, the previous school year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great. All right, next this public comment. Do have one person in attendance, in attendance. If they would like to raise their hand, they're welcome to, to make a comment on the second. All right, I do not see any hands raised, so I think we can move on to the next one. Uh, next is consideration of the minutes for March 4, 2021. Uh, does anybody have any comments before we do a motion to approve? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second that.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a presentation on competency-based education, which I believe Ms. Casas is gonna do.
As you know, we've been working on competency-based teaching and middle school teachers have really worked hard on that this year. Mrs. Sestroni did a presentation a couple of months ago and now Mrs. Casas is gonna do a presentation today about a competency-based unit that she did in ELA. And they've done a fantastic job. I can't say enough about the work they've done and how hard they worked and they've really taken on the challenge and done a fantastic job. So Sarah, I'm gonna turn it over to you and Deb, can you give her, so she can screen share, right?
She did. The one thing I want to say though, Michelle, is if we put my screen up and you see all my lines, like you know how my screen has lines? You might want to share and I would just tell you to move along.
All right, I can share then.
But let me put the, um, let me just put the, the, I'll put the presentation here in the chat. If you want to use, get it from here. All right, it's right up here. It's just my computer will distract you if you guys have to look at it. So you have that?
Um, we would need access to it, so it might be, it might be best just to do on the screen.
Do you want me just to share my screen and see if I can, um?
Yeah, let's do that.
If you're gonna really have to block out the, um,
I can share my screen, Sarah.
Well, Michelle can share it, Sarah. All right, yeah, because it's, I have lines on my screen. It would really drive you nuts. Okay, all righty. So if you want to put present and then I'll just talk and I'll tell you when to move on. Okay, so, um, so what I was thinking about, I, I presented last year on uh, quality performance assessments and I was here for Carmelina's, so I sort of have a sense of what you've seen and what you, what you've learned already about competency-based teaching and assessments. So I wanted to take you pretty quickly because I know you have a lot to do over what it looks like to make a unit when you're using competency-based assessments and grading. So you can go to the next one. So I wanted to take you through sort of quickly the unit design. So the first thing I do is I'm thinking about what the essential questions are. What are the big ideas I want students to explore, Michelle? Um, and so the unit that I'm going to focus on was a social justice unit. So the three things that I was thinking about ahead of time is one, then a sort of like be thinking about what is social justice, what issues shape the idea of justice in our society? And then it's ELA, so how can literature shape our understanding of social justice? So it was really important, it's important to sort of think about what are those big ideas that you want the kids to be thinking about because that's what's going to shape everything that comes afterwards. Um, after that, you wanna go to the next, the next part of my unit design is thinking about what do I want the students to know at the end of the unit? So really thinking, and we've done a lot of work this year with John Vander Els and he's really helped me with that. Thinking before I start, what do I want them to know, what do I want them to know at the end? So then I'm thinking about what are the competencies and standards that I want to teach and assess? And that has definitely changed the way I'm creating my units because I'm really focusing on what are the skills I want to see that they've learned. So in this unit, we, they, this is all the things they did. It was about a two-month unit and the competencies and reading, writing, speaking, listening, reading skills, language and self-direction. There's just a ton. It's a really rich unit. Um, and so those are all the competencies that we covered, but they weren't all the competencies that like they touched on, they were exposed to it, but it wasn't what we were, it was necessarily assessing. But it's sort of putting it out like that gives me a sense of the richness of this learning experience for the kids. Then, um, but so the big things I think about, and again, I've been working with John on is how, what, what do you really, because with language arts, it's almost overwhelming how many things that you're trying to do with them in their, in the class, how many different competencies and standards you are trying to hit. And so you can sort of get into the weeds a little bit when you're, when you have an assignment or a project looking at everything. And so the, one of the things that the competencies have done for me is it's helped me focus a little bit more. So yes, they're going to do a ton of reading, they're gonna do a lot of writing, but what is the, what are the things that, the really important things that I'm really looking at at the, during this unit? What do I'm going to be really focusing on in my formative assessments and what are we going to assess for competency at the end? So for this unit, there was two argument writing summative assessments, which meant they did it independently without me instructing them how to do it. Um, and then they were based on a Ruse brick. There was an informative writing piece that was a result of the research. And then one of the pieces that I focus on that I know they need for high school is sort of the research piece where they can write a work cited and when, where they can really determine the credibility of sources. And interesting enough, I had a vertical team meeting and that was the one thing the high school student teachers were most concerned about the kids doing. So I was really happy I had identified that as a summative assessment. So these were the big things the kids were gonna do for summative. And so then the next thing that I'm thinking about, this is when I'm making my unit, is how I know they know it. Um, and so I'm building in, um, from the start, what are going to be the formative, the practice opportunities and what are gonna be the, the more sort of the summative, the competency assessment opportunities? How am I gonna know? Because that's really important because you can see nodding heads when we're doing things and you think they all get it. But unless I'm doing some formative check-ins, I, I, I'm gonna miss if somebody's just nodding and they're lost. So that was the next piece. So I want to show you, if you want to turn that, move the slide. So there, we're doing formative and summative, and this is one of the bigger pieces, I think, of the competency shift. Um, so I wanted to show you, on the left-hand side, I'm picking a competency and this was, um, a language competency where the kids are determining the meaning of language. And so on the left side, you can see there are two formative, a set of formative pieces. Kids are going to be interacting with vocabulary. They're going to be learning about roots and prefixes and suffixes, and that's on the left. But then I want to give them a chance to sort of, I want to see what they're taking with them. So there's practice all through my unit on that language skills on the left. But then at one point I check in to see, can, are I'm gonna give them some, something they've never seen? Can they determine the meaning of the language? Can they determine how it's used? And that's a summative. Uh, and that's based on the kind of practicing we're doing, the kind of conversations we're having as we're reading. And the summatives are going to come with a rubric, which you'll see on the bottom with them. And then so we, you can keep, you can move. And so this is second example was as the competency is analyzing the interaction of ideas. The formative we're doing all the time when we're reading this, um, the Just Mercy with the class. Lots of conversation, lots of writing about questions we're talking about. But then again, I need them to see if they can do it on their own and also give them a practice for some of the stuff they might be asked to do on a test or in high school. So on the right is a summative where they haven't been asked the questions in quite that way, but they've been practicing on the formative. And again, with the summative comes that rubric that lists the standard and I can highlight what parts they're getting and what parts they still are developing on. So, um, I want to talk a little bit about one of the nice things I think about competency-based learning. Because I, I was trying, there's so much I want to tell you about, but I don't want to keep you here all night. So I think that one of the things, and you saw, heard this with Carmelina, is that competency-based learning, the whole goal is it's for it to be engaging, to be, to be diverse, to have, and to have choice. So really trying to think of all the different ways, formative ways that you can expose the kids to the competencies and to the material. So while we were doing that social justice unit and we were reading a text together as a class, kids got to pick a book, a fiction book to read. They chose movies to watch. They were comparing movies and, and the novel version, they were listening to podcasts, so really trying to give them a wide variety of entryways into the topic. The other thing that's really important with the, with the competencies is the ability to scaffold and the ability to differentiate. With the technology and with COVID, one of the, I think, for me, the, the bonuses is it got me doing even more online and I've created these digital notebooks, which means that all my material is online. Um, and that's been really wonderful for scaffolding and differentiating. I can go into the, their, this individual student's notebook and if I'm noticing they're struggling with something, I can, I can pop in a sentence starter guide or I can give them a different resource to use in addition to the one I might have provided for all the kids. And, and conversely, with students who I'm seeing can do more, I can put into their notebook uh, an extension to another article or having them watch something that's a little bit more complex on, on YouTube video or TED Talk. So I love the digital notebooks because the kids, nobody knows what's in each other's notebooks. So I'm able to provide so much scaffolding and differentiating on, with technology. And the other thing about the competency-based learning, especially those quality performance assessments, is that really trying to get high-level engagement and relevancy and trying to make sure that they see that the learning that's happening in the classroom can, is relevant and can be applied to the world. And with the, the social justice unit, we were able to do that again. This is a COVID gift, I think, through so many virtual speakers. Um, I had a Hampton, a judge from Hampton District Court come and speak to the kids about the justice system. We had a Newburyport police officer talk to them about what it, what it's like to be a police officer and really give them a different perspective. Uh, I, we had a law student from Berkeley come and talk to the, them about her work she's doing with prison reform. And then we were able to get a former state senator talk about her work she did on the death penalty when the bill was being in front of the Senate. So these to me are, number one, it's wonderful to be able to see there's some pluses to COVID. But also I think with the competency, it's challenged me to sort of figure out, how do you make these things more relevant? Because you want them to be able to trans, know that, that what they're learning here is, needs to be transferable. So then the final thing is how do I know they know it? Um, and so we've been working and you saw this last year on quality performance assessments and you saw Carmelina present when she showed, um, the, the kids doing those amazing posters. And so this year, I think for me, the quality performance assessments have been much more targeted to my classes. Last year they were all school and really cool, but these are really intentional to have them work on ELA competencies. So for my class, you can turn the slide. For the social justice, the quality performance assessment, after they did all of this rich learning about, connected to the social justice and to the, the novel we read, I wanted them to pick a topic that they were really interested in exploring more. So they chose a research topic related to social justice. It was completely their choices. I had these big ideas of the kind of things I thought they would do and none of them did anything. It's just like when you have kids, you know, you have like, you know what you think they should do and nobody does anything, but they all picked topics they were passionate about. And so for the research, again, working with John, what do I really want them to know? So in the past, I would have probably graded all of their writing and, and, and done a lot of like, everything. And for this, I decided, well, what I really want them to know is how to evaluate the credibility of sources and, and how to understand, because they're gonna be going to high school and when they go online, where they're getting their sources and how to know if they can use those, if they're credible. So we, that's where we spent a lot of time with direct instruction on and you'll see some of that is below that box. Um, and they then did their research and I went in and helped them sort of individually and with that class of seven, it's really easy to go and help them individually. Then after they did all their research, they had to present a proposal to me, what their project was gonna be. And I wanted them to come up with something after they did their research that they thought would be important. Something that could be, we talked about being change makers, something that could impact people or affect a change. And so they presented a proposal to me and then we worked together on number three on making a rubric because I'd already done a ton of assessments already during this unit on the, on those competencies I'd identified. So I was able to give them a lot of flexibility on their final project. I didn't need to see necessarily a written assignment. They're writing me a proposal. They wrote an informational piece on their research. So there was so much flexibility to their project. So because of that, I couldn't make one-size-fit-all rubrics. So I sat down with every kid and we talked about what they were doing and what competencies they felt they would be, should be assessed on. And that was something they'd never done before. I'd never done it before. And, and that was interesting. It was interesting to ask the kids, well, what does a proficient look like? You're making, you're doing a TED Talk. What are the things that I'm gonna need to assess you on? What do you think is your project's gonna look like if it's proficient? So having a conversation where we actually wrote those things down and I pull out, like, let this, this state competencies and the rubrics I use to make mine and they're like, whoa, look at that. I'm like, you don't need to understand this, but this is where I'm gonna take what you're telling me. And so that was pretty powerful, um, for the kids to be, not only did they, they chose their project, but then they got to actually help write the criteria for how it is gonna be assessed. So I want to show you one final project. Um, so two kids did the same topic, which was a, a really interesting topic. They were interested because we did a lot about the criminal justice system and the kids really started to think about like, the different ways that people, when they face a judge, there's different kinds of sentences they have. And they were thinking about, um, the, the use of drug courts in New Hampshire. And in New Hampshire, all the counties but one had a drug court. And so two of the kids started researching that because they researched, they had learned that they thought there was a great value in this and, and using drug courts and they had been really successful. So they researched it. They found out why that county wasn't, didn't have a drug court, what their arguments were. Um, and so then they wrote letters and they have sent them off to the county commissioners of, of that county. And, and they're hoping that maybe they'll get a response, but that was an incredibly rich assignment. You can see on the left, all the competencies that they hit in argument writing, because essentially they were writing an argument letter. Um, and then that's the thing that I found, um, most powerful in using a quality performance assessment was how engaged they were. And because of this level of engagement, I, I'm like, well, you know, guys, you need to understand why they didn't, why they don't want one. Because if you're gonna write them a letter about how great it is and you don't understand why they said no, they're not gonna pay any attention to you. So I had the kids doing such deep research and I remember the excitement that the one student had when he found a, an, an article that explained why they said no about having drug courts. So, um, I just found that the, the depth of their research and their interest was just much more doing something that they chose and they had a real-life ending. And in addition, making it, um, not have errors, spelling errors and grammatical errors, they were much more engaged in making sure this letter didn't have mistakes. Uh, which I was, I'm often the biggest editor of the writing and I wasn't on this one. So I was, it was really exciting to watch this. It was a really exciting to see their final projects. Michelle got to come in and watch. And so I have a really short clip because I'm really, I know it doesn't seem like I'm sensitive to time, but I'm really sensitive to time. So I want to show you like two minutes of their presentation on drug courts.
So I researched drug courts in New Hampshire and I found out that Sullivan County was the only county in New Hampshire without a drug court. So I wrote three letters to the three Sullivan County commissioners about why they should have a drug court in that county.
My project, I talked about like drug courts, which are like something that you can go through if you're addicted to drugs. And I think it was really interesting and I think that like all counties in New Hampshire should have one. I think it's really relevant.
It also makes like a lot of sense financially because like for holding somebody in drug court or having them go through it, it's a dollar and forty-two cents a day, but then it's like ninety-nine dollars and forty-five cents a day to have somebody addicted to drugs in prison.
Twenty-eight percent nationally of participants who have graduated from drug court do not reoffend within ten years after leaving. Compared to sixty percent of inmates in prison do not reoffend.
Total, it's safe per a hundred people, it's like one point two million dollars saved. So it's around twelve thousand dollars are saved per person to go through drug court.
So in a drug court, there are like mandatory drug tests and court hearings and there's also cognitive therapy to help.
During my research, I saw that Sullivan County was offered a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to make a drug court. And then the county manager, well, he quoted that, sending high-risk offenders back into the community they came from is not something you want to do. And, but drug court, like towards the end of it, they're like required to get a job, like they're required, they're, like they're not just throwing back out into the world once they finish it, like.
And participants after leaving drug court like improve their lives, such as one person who regained custody of their child after they completed drug court.
And what do you think is gonna happen to your letters?
I hope they at least get a response and maybe even consider adding a drug court.
So that's just a little clip of, of their presentation. They just, I'm really impressed with, um, I think you just need to turn to the next slide and I have one more, two more slides. And how articulate they were. And then finally, what, what's changed? And I'll be really fast. I was thinking about what has changed with the kids and with competencies. So you can go to the next slide, Michelle. Um, so first of all, the kids are, I think there's just a lot more, um, sort of understanding of the big picture for kids. I, I honestly don't think that's all there yet, but I do feel in a couple of years, kids are gonna more understand all these sort of components to their competency learning. Their essential quantities are now listed, key standards are in these notebooks. We talk about formative and summative all the time. They're seeing these rubrics all the time and I'm starting to try to use the same rubrics for, like they're seeing the same rubrics over and over again. So I think that's what things start to look like for the kids. And for me, what's changed with the competency-based, um, learning, and that's the next slide, Michelle, and then I'm done, is I really think, um, for the first time, I'm doing assessments that are entirely competency, using competency-based rubrics. And that's something that's new this year for me, the habits of learning, so self-direction's completely separate from the competency and that's not something we were doing before. So that's a huge shift in my teaching. I feel that my units are being, are much more intentionally planned. I'm really thinking at the beginning, what do I want at the end? So that's making me target my sort of assessments differently. And then we are changing the way we're grading. We're on a one to four scale. But although I'm not even putting those numbers down, I don't think we're using numbers, but beginning developing proficient in advance. And honestly, as a language arts teacher, I like that so much better. Because it's really hard to say, well, you're an eighty-five in writing. I mean, that doesn't, how do you do that even? Like, I, I just feel like being able to look at the competencies and highlight where their strengths are, where they're developing. And then also just like you're developing, you're beginning or your proficient just makes a lot more sense when you're talking about, um, English and language arts classes. So, so that's it. Thank you for being patient and listening to my long presentation.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you. It's, uh, it's so helpful to see it, um, presented from, uh, you know, a teacher who's doing it. And I just want to thank you, uh, for, you know, putting together such a good presentation.
Well, thank you for letting us, um.
I want to also point out that Sarah said I got to see this in action and the students were so excited about this whole unit. So engaged from the beginning to the end. And they really felt like they made a difference in the world or that, that they. And they really felt like they made a difference in the world or that that they empowered them to make a difference in the world. So it was fantastic. Great job, Sarah.
Thank you.
It it seems like it's just more real, you know, like something you can actually hold, you know, some instead of just an essay or, you know, it just, it's more personal, I think.
Yeah, I agree, Becky. I think they're just a lot more engaged. You can't do that all the time, obviously, but it's nice to be able to do that and have like it's it, yeah, they're super engaged.
Yeah, for sure. I don't know if everybody knows, but Jackson's my son and he was, he loved it. He every night he was here, you know, we were talking about it and sharing all the information that he learned, the stuff that he found, you know, his letter, he was, he was really excited about it. So it made a huge difference for sure.
Yeah. So thank you for letting us share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And I want to echo what everyone said about Ms. Cassas' class. I had the pleasure of stepping in to that class last week. And the students were definitely very engaged, very excited about this project. And they were also excited to talk about high school. So it's definitely towards the end of the year for the eighth graders. Everybody's really excited. So thank you very much. Very impressive.
Well, my kids were very excited that you were in school.
Really?
It was a bit, it was a hot topic when they got home, so.
Kids never show it. They, you know, they like barely look at me. The little kids do, not the big kids, you know, they play cool. Great. It's nice to hear. Um, okay, so I just wanted my touch my report. I just want to highlight a few things on the report. First, that our our first vaccine dose weekend, March twenty twenty first was was a huge success. It was very smooth. It it went very quickly. People were very happy to see each other. It was kind of a nice extra to the to the, you know, the vaccine itself is, you know, phenomenal for for morale and the health and safety for our employees. But people got to see each other and that was that was really nice. Our second dose is scheduled for April seventeenth and SAU twenty one will be the majority of our SAU will will be completed that morning of that Saturday, the seventeenth. So we are looking forward to that. We're very grateful to the Hampton Fire Department. And also EMTs from from Hampton Fire, Hampton Falls and North Hampton. We're helping us out with that. In addition, our school nurses, so all our school nurses helped a lot. Ms. Kira Hayes, who I know is listening, helped us help us out a lot there. And I know she she'll be helping us at the second dose as well. Next, all our districts, K eight and high school are working on offering some after school activities for the spring for middle school. And I know that Ms. Witt has been working with with her staff to to create some safe opportunities for the cohorts to occur after school. So that's that planning is well underway. And I wanted to touch on some of the the return to in person learning and superintendent listening sessions. Obviously, the the in person learning is is going well. We've had a couple bumps in the road lately. However, you know, because the staff is is so good at shifting and, you know, keeping the kids engaged in remote learning, I think that's you know, that's that's something that that they're doing and they're managing very well. So I heard from from parents and staff and from students and listening sessions as well as visits over the past couple of weeks and had some really, really nice comments from from all the groups as far as connecting. Teachers connecting with their students regarding the high school students and how try three is rolling out for them. Given the health and safety protocols that that the high school needs to needs to have, given the three options that they're that they're giving for kids at the high school. And so I'll be I'll be offering more of these coming up in the future, but I wanted to just include a few a few comments there from from our our staff and students and families. And that's my report this month.
Thank you. Becky or Sharon, you have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
No, I'm set. Thank you.
Next is the assistant superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. The report's attached and I'll echo the congratulations and the good sentiment to Sarah. It's it's great work she's doing. And I'll just a quick little plug. She mentioned the vertical teams. I can't believe it didn't even make it into my report. We did have a vertical team meeting, all the vertical team meetings this past week. It's important just as a highlight to that presentation that kids are hearing the same thing as they move into the high school. They're talking about formative and summative and they're using similar competencies. So it's just, it's nice to see a plan coming together and there is no small part of that. So my report has kind of three, three topics. The first one is summer planning update. That no, it's not a bad joke, but the other districts did receive their COVID funding, their COVID two point O. Sorry, Michelle. But it is relevant to Southampton, even though you didn't receive your COVID funding. Because we are looking at dovetailing together some professional development opportunities where Southampton teachers can can come in and participate with other districts. So I mean, it's just the benefits of the SAU play out in that respect. So that's been happening over the last couple of weeks and districts are starting to contract with vendors and getting some supports together for that. To certification update, we are in the harassment stage of certifications. They are due April fifteenth for the teachers who are up on their three year cycle. Right now, we are up to one hundred and ten endorsements approved out of a total of one hundred and seventy two that are that need to be done. So we're tracking on that and we are making sure to follow up with all of our teachers there. And then the last one is world language update. I wanted to make sure I touched on this. I might have mentioned at the last board meeting. But as part of our program review process, you guys knew know the math came out. The next up was world language and obviously due to COVID, we've got a lot of muddy data in terms of performance. And in terms of, you know, absenteeism and recommendations, it's just not the best time right now to to pull performance data for world language. But we are, what we are doing instead of that is kind of starting to delineate some best practices around world language instruction. And, you know, whatever, however, that iterates in your district, based on schedule, based on the number of staff you have. We wanted to, I wanted to provide some some best practices and some models that we would encourage throughout the SAU. So that work is just starting. But we are borrowing heavily from Oyster River. They actually went through this process a couple of years ago. And they've got a lot of resources, so I've been stealing liberally from them. So that's, that's where we are with respect to curriculum. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I think we're good. Thank you, David. Next is the principals' report. Michelle, do you want to run through it?
Can you guys hear me? I'm having trouble with my microphone.
Yep.
So as you know, we had a COVID case this week, the two, three classroom. But if parents came, they were great and picked their kids up, we had the room emptied out within a half hour. Everybody was home. And things are going well remotely. Everybody was able to switch quickly, so we're doing well. They'll be back on April ninth. So so far, we've contained it and no one else has tested positive. So hopefully we'll stay that way. We had parent teacher conferences last week and it was great because we had almost a hundred percent attendance, which was fantastic. It was the best attendance that anyone's ever had here. Which we think a lot of that is attributed to being able to do it virtually, which is the thing that we'll think about in the future is having that option always. Report cards went out today. And we haven't heard anything from parents, so we're guessing that it's been successful that they're able to see them on Power School. And as Caroline mentioned, we are doing after school sports club coming up and we're starting April thirteenth. And it will run through the end of May twice a week. We're going to keep the kids in their cohorts, but they'll be doing various sports activities during that time. We're excited to offer that and there's a there are a lot of students who are signed up for that. So we think that'll be really good for our students. We are going to have our annual variety show. It's going to be held virtually. And we're going to have that out to parents on April fourteenth. There's a there's a typo in your report. It's actually the fourteenth, not the sixteenth. I just realized that. And then we also, we wanted to sort of acknowledge the year anniversary from the pandemic starting and shutting down the school and the country shut down. And so we put together a slideshow. All the students took a slide and reflected on the year and what it was like for them. And we shared it at an all school meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I put the link to that slideshow in the report, so you can look at that. It's actually really interesting and there, it was nice to see that there were some positive experience out of it that came out of it. So you might enjoy looking at that. As far as professional development goes, we're still, as Sarah said, working with John Vander Alles. He's still working with middle school, but now more putting more focus onto elementary. And we've done some SEL professional development the last PD day where we did some work around attachment based teaching strategies and the importance of building relationships with students. And then last, but not least on the report is we're having some issues with our fire alarm. It's not working properly. Sometimes it's sounding, when we set it off, it's going off in the gym, but it's not going off in the main building or it's going off in the main building and it's not going or and it's not going off in the gym. We're having trouble turning it on and we're having trouble turning it off. So we had central signal come out and look at it and they say that we they recommend that we get a new system, that our system is just too old. So Peter's looking at getting some quotes for that. But it's something, a safety issue that we really need to look at and replacing. And Matt, do you have any questions?
Michelle, the um, the speed limit light, that twenty, is that going to turn back on?
It is. We're getting it fixed. We had to, we're waiting for a part to come in to get it.
Okay, okay. And then also, um, what are your thoughts on graduation? I know it might be a little bit early, but what are you, what are you thinking?
We are going to have a graduation. We plan to have it outside. Of course, this is all dependent on if anything changes, but right now we're hoping to have an outside graduation. We have a tentative date for June tenth and a rain date for June fourteenth. And we'll be, we actually just pulled this together this week, but working out a couple of kinks before we put it definitively out to the public.
Awesome.
Good question. Yeah, thank you, Sharon. I thought the report card was pretty easy. Just a minor comment, maybe put the link in to the actual website in your mailer. So like, so I I just noticed some people, I I figured it out like when I read it, it was pretty easy what you figure, you know. Yeah, you know, I think just having that link would have been a nice thing. And then the only thing I noticed other than that was in the, it didn't happen in the middle school side, but in the younger grades, it just said refer to the parent teacher conference. And it would have been nice to have some verbiage there. Just for future. You know, it's the, I thought the parent teacher conferences went great and it was actually pretty well virtual, but it was, it is nice to just have that, like some form of written side. And I I kind of was looking through Power School. I didn't see anything in there. It just kind of said, kept referring to parent teacher conference and I just think as a parent, it's nice to see that little personal, especially in a small school, that personal touch. So those may be my minor comments, but overall, that was really well done and easy. Becky, did you have anything? Okay, great. And thank you for handling, you know, the situation this week so well. That's you guys have done a great job all year and this, I think we recognize this at the beginning of the year, there are going to be situations that happen and it's just been really nice to see it handled with such a care, you know, and the few times we've had to deal with, you guys have had to deal with it. So thank you.
It was great. The parents were fantastic. That's a big part of it.
Yeah. Great. Next, Matt, do you want to take us through the finance report?
Sure, thank you. So we concluded the expenditure and revenue reports fiscal year to date. You'll, as you recall, at the last board meeting, we had a public hearing for the withdrawal of funds from the to to supplement from the special education expendable trust as well as the technology trust to supplement this year's operating budget as roughly twenty nine thousand dollars. Because as you know, we we do have a you know, we're we're cutting it fairly close. We, that being said, we are confident that we're in good shape for the remainder of the year. You know, we we did have some excess revenue when it comes to the supplemental response or public school response fund as well as some insurance rebates and then refunding. So we do feel that we do, we we should be able to make the rest of the year without any additional withdrawals. That being said, it is something that we are closely monitoring for any unexpended costs. Speaking of unexpended costs, Michelle referenced the the fire alarm system, which which really is a a concern and a potential safety issue that we we do want, we we do feel needs to be addressed. You know, sooner than later. And what we are, so currently, as she had said, we are getting quotes. At which point we will put together some specifications, go out to bid. And the suggestion is to utilize the building maintenance expendable trust to to fund that replacement. And that's obviously, that was an item that we identified in the budget as something we would need to address in in future years. However, we are hoping it would last a little bit longer, but there's been a few instances this year where we've had some pretty significant issues with it. So we will, we will be coming back with, you know, with RFP and potentially public hearing withdrawal dates. We preliminarily, we are looking at probably in the thirty thousand dollar range based on our initial quotes, we have approximately sixty thousand dollars in the building maintenance trust. So it's something we're going to have to take a close look at and evaluate where we are once we get a little more information. The the other good piece of news that that Dave, that Dave brought up was the the lack of grant funding via COVID. We we do hope to leverage some of the three million plus dollars that the other districts are receiving with an SAU twenty one to benefit Southampton. However, unfortunately, there there really can't be, you know, with with the structure that we have with very distinct districts. That it can't be a whole lot of sharing of those funds other than sharing of resources. You know, we would have loved to have brought forth some type of like strategic planning. You know, initiative through some of these funds, some of some more SAU wide. You know, initiatives and unfortunately, though, Southampton, along with Hampton Falls, did not receive, is not receiving any. So otherwise, we were our expenditures are you know, are in line with with prior month. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have. prior month um at behalf of the answering specific questions you may have.
The only other question I would have just regarding the building is have, has the facilities manager done a review to see if there's any other at risk type of expenditures that we may see in the next two, three years that that we may need to start preparing for ahead of time, especially if we're, you know, we're starting to pull that that maintenance fund down pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are some, um there's, there are some projects. Um off the top of my head, I can think of probably within the next five years, we're going to have to replace that that other roof on the 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 uh, so we replaced the old side building. Now, we're we're going to have to replace the other roof in the, on the newer side, probably in five years. Um we're having the, so the consultants that um kind of managing the process for the gymnasium roof are going to take another look um just while they're over here and to to evaluate that roof to give us a better idea, um if if there's, if we can extend the life at all. You know, we we do have um a list of of projects. Um I mean, we, we're we're trying to focus on um maintenance and repair at this point. But you know, some of our systems are getting older. Um Michelle, was there any other big items that you can think off the top of your head?
Trying to think there were things that we put in the budget this year that we knew were going to, you know, just coming up.
Let's remember from the past, wasn't the boiler a potential concern?
It is. I mean, it's in, it's in much better shape right now, but yes, that's, that's, that is a concern. Um it's kind of reaching, it's getting toward end of life. I I I know we'll have to, I'll have to check with the facilities manager, um Peter. But last I heard, they were, you know, they were, they were, they thought there was some, some useful life still in it. But we're getting towards the end. Um so that's I, we're going to have to take a much closer look and then starts um, you know, this coming budget cycle, we're probably going to want to be prudent to um to put some money away into these expendables, like maybe ramp up the expendable trusts a little bit um with like a maybe a five year plan or goal for some of these projects.
I actually found the list of things like installing LED lighting, that's going to be about eleven thousand. Repairing the siding on the east side of the building. And we, and then replacing the wheelchair left in the median.
Yeah, so some of, so some of those items, like, so like the side, like, I I know we we get, we're addressing some of that siding issue now um at at short money. Um obviously, the LED lighting makes a whole lot of sense. Um there's a, there's like a three year return on those projects, but it's not a need to do. That's a, that's more of a long term, that's more of a, you know, long term savings project. Um the wheelchair lifts, um we don't currently have the need, uh but we could. And that's a, that's a building code issue. Yeah, no, not code. I'm handing handicapped accessibility issue, so and that's a big project. That's a lot of money. So so yeah, so we'll, you know, that that's um, that's something that this, I think, is summer. We need to to really take a close look at what we need to prioritize and um and then going into the budget cycle. Um what we want to focus on.
Yeah, I'm kind of with you. I think there, we just need to kind of have an idea of what's going to come over the next five years and be able to start in the next budget cycle. I know it's a ways away from now, but um just ahead of time of knowing how much we should kind of prioritize that, so we can start to replenish and build that up ahead of any kind of expenditures. We, we have, yeah, building has started to get a little older, right? So these things are going to happen.
But absolutely, not not unexpected. And we we have, we have most of this stuff on our radar. It's just um you know, I I think it's prudent for us to really take a hard look and and use, you know, this year, I'm I'm, it wasn't an off year, but it was a unique year in that we we didn't fund any of our expendable trusts, whereas we actually withdrew from a couple of them. So I I think hopefully the the economic climates and things improve where we can um, you know, take a, take a closer look at these, these pro, these facilities related issues, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Michelle. All right. Um next, under new business is the award of the Chromebook bid.
Yes, um so we we did complete the the RFP process for um our annual Chromebook purchase. So now Southampton is is as part of that purchasing agreement. So we do, we do conduct a co- cooperative bid process along with um, you know, when it kind of, um and Seabrook. Um and that's just to just achieve better um pricing with with quantity of scale. Um we sent bids out to nine vendors and seven submitted bids. And we are recommending award of bid to Limitless USA in the amount of eight thousand twenty-five dollars and if you recall, um per the budget, we are utilizing the um the technology capital reserve um fund. We were over, we're over target. Um we 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 took out four thousand dollars to supplement the budget and then this is our that that allocated um amount. So we will have a public here. So we're asking for board approval of this, this RFP. Um but also of note, I just want to let you know that at um at the next board meeting, a public hearing will be held where um for the actual withdrawal from the the capital reserve fund. So that will provide the opportunity for the public to weigh in and then um you, at that point, you'll vote to withdraw from the fund.
And have we worked with them before?
We have not. Um so that was, that was actually our our first question at the SAU, uh because we were not familiar with this company. You know, we, you know, if you look at the um who bid, um CDW gets a lot of our business. Access is one um of bid results, but Limitless is a company out of California. Um we had our technology um directors from all three schools reach out and and speak to them uh to make sure that um they're meeting um the specifications um that were um included in the RFP. Um with Chromebooks, it's pretty straightforward because it's an exact model and type. But we did want to ensure that they weren't trying to sell us um like refurbished um machines or anything like that. Um so they're comfortable um with this company after after vetting them. Uh we also asked for references. So um so they're comfortable with it, so on that, that's, it's good enough for me, so that's why that's we're bringing it forth.
Okay, that's good to hear. So um for that, do we need to do the motion now or the next time?
So yes, so this, this would be the motion to award the bid.
And then we do the public hearing, okay.
And it'll be to withdraw the funds.
Great. Um so can I get a motion to award the Chromebook bid to Limitless USA in the amount of eight thousand twenty-five?
I'll make that motion.
My second. Jim Keim?
Yes.
Professor Verdic?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm going to leave the meeting at this time.
Thank you, Becky.
All right, bye.
Next, under continuing business is the superintendent search update. Do you want me to run through it or Dave, you want to do it?
Um e- either way, yeah, sure, I can, I can speak to it and fill in blanks uh if you need to. So um position opening closes on the fourth of April, uh which is basically the end of this week. Um we do have candidates and have started the interview process. And we look forward to making a determination in the near future.
That's pretty much it. Sharon, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, next is the retirement stipend. Um which is actually going to be a non-public. So um can I get a motion to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A three A?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Give one second, just bring in the time. Jim Keim?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken. So Dave, I would imagine, I'm going to, I'm going to um.
Can I get a motion to come out of non-public?
I'll make that motion.
And I will second.
Jim Keim?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
All right, next on the agenda, um uh can I get a motion to approve um a retirement stipend for Lynn Behan as presented?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
So give me one second, because now my board docs is doing the same thing again.
Or is.
Who did the, who did the um?
Sharon did the motion and I did the second.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Okay. How about, we'll do the vote and I'll, I'll record it afterwards. So, Jim Keim?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Oh, here I go. Give me one second, I have it. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Um just running through an upcoming meeting dates, the uh joint board policy meeting is going to be on Wednesday, April fourteenth. The um operations committee meeting is going to be Tuesday uh May fourth um at five thirty. The next Southampton school board meeting is going to be Thursday, May sixth at four thirty and the SAU joint board is going to be Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at six o'clock. And can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
And I will second. And I think we can do a show of hands. It's a, thank you, everyone. Um the presentation was great, Michelle. It was, uh it's always real, very helpful to to see that from the teachers, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, goodbye, everyone.
Right, bye. Good night, thank you.